Get your dorm experience back.
What?
Yeah. There's a couple of duplexes right on Babe that I looked at.
Yeah, thanks.
Well, it is seven o'clock. I'd like to call the Congress City Council meeting to order. Mr. Dickerson, would you please say our prayer and our pledge of allegiance?
Sure. Father in heaven, we pause here tonight to give thanks and offer gratitude for the great things that are happening in College Place. And we pray that you'll be with us tonight and give us guidance and give us patience and grace as we listen to each other and look at the issues from every point of view. And we pray that this thing is in your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's now upon the comment period. Anybody wishing to address the Council City Council, please step forward to the microphone and state your name and address. Once again, anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council, please step forward, state your name and address. And one last time, anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council, please step forward, state your name and address. Seeing them before you is the consent agenda, council. I do have one change to the formal agenda for this evening. I'd like to eliminate Agenda Item 5.12, resource office for College Place public schools. We have a contract language that needs to be worked on and before bringing that together, we need to get that settled out. Can I move that for a privilege consent to you? Consent is with the chair? Yes, for the chair.
Second?
It's good. A favor by Mr. Dickerson, second by Mr. Peterson. All in favor, please signify the same on. I oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. We do have several presentations this evening. I would like to read a proclamation. The proclamation is, whereas the National Association of Town Watch sponsors a national community building campaign on August 1st, 2017, and whereas the National Night Out event provides an opportunity for the neighbors of the city of College Place to join over 38 million people in 16-plus thousand communities from all 50 states, United States territories, community and cities, and military bases worldwide, and whereas National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer, more caring places to live, and whereas neighbors in the city of College Place assist the College Place Police Department through joint community building efforts and support National Night Out 2017, and whereas it is essential that all neighbors of the city of College Place come together with police and work together to build a safer, more caring community. Now, therefore, I, Harvey, our proud mayor, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 1st, 2017 as National Night Out in the city of College Place and call upon our neighbors of College Place to join the College Place Police Department and the National Association of Town Watch in support for National Night Out on August 1st, 2017. I will say that if we have a member of the city of Walla Walla's Police Department, Ms. Ruley is here this evening along with Chief Tamaras. Ms. Ruley, do you have anything to say to the council?
I'd like to say thank you to the College Place Council tonight for doing the National Night Out proclamation and that you were all invited to Walla Walla's National Night Out at Pioneer Park, which is Tuesday night from 5:00 to 7:30. We take it off with a emergency services parade, which will start from the Maxine Church on Stern Street. You're welcome to hitch a ride that night if you would like to participate. And we look forward to future National Night Outs. This was our, this will be our 11th National Night Out and it's been an award winning conference. Thank you. And what time does that begin? 5:00 to 7:00 here. Thank you.
Can you get closer?
Oh! We've got to have viewer pictures.
I'm going to slow my hat on for giving this for the photo. Calm down on the class. Right up to go.
Before I can be flashed a little bit now.
You can't take the hat off because your face is all put it backwards. I don't know. Like, there's a hold it. That's perfect.
It's off to the side.
Turn it inside out.
With the fingers up.
And, Ms. Dory?
Hi there. We're just getting set up. Thank you.
So, as you may remember, we started trying to recognize our employees for, the first one, for 40 years we've been here, and Johnson, we've been here a little over 10 years now. And so, we're going to be providing a 10-year pay. Thank you so very much. Paul, as your...
Thank you. 10 years. I'm going to wait for you. Thank you.
That's good.
Well, I think we'll do cakes at 20, Charlie.
Oh, it's white.
See, it's actually a chain. Each year, we add another link, and then we just chain you to your desk.
So, Ms. Phildor, final rate recommendations for wastewater utility.
Yeah, so, we are bringing back to you the final rate recommendations for the wastewater utility based on the study results from FCS Group. And we had them do a rate study workshop at council a few meetings ago, and then at the council workshop last week, we had them present their first go-around of recommendations. We came back, we took your feedback, and we came back and kind of tweaked them a little bit, and tonight, they're going to be presenting kind of their final recommendations for you. And I need to get logged into the go-to meeting. Angie, do you have a go-to meeting for me?
Yes. It's up and ready to roll if you have the ID number, the link.
Mr. Wizantella, would you introduce our county?
So, this is our substitute for Andrea. Alan Benson.
Hi, Alan.
Can I see everybody?
Thanks for being here.
Okay, you're up. Angie, I've got you up on the screen now.
Perfect. Is the slide switched now?
Yep.
Perfect. Excellent. Well, good evening to everyone. Just as a quick overview, Ms. Phildor did a great job of identifying that this was our, this is our third meeting in terms of presenting the rate study process and findings. And so, again, we're on the June 13th and June 27th meeting date. What we'd like to focus on today, tonight, is the, to discuss a little bit about the final study findings and recommendations. And again, that was based on the feedback that we did receive after the June 27th, or on the June 27th meeting date. So, that's what really the focus will be this evening. To recap just a little, for those who may not have been with us for those meetings, the rate study really focused on development of what we call revenue requirement. And what revenue requirement does is develop some multi-year financial plan to ensure that we're meeting all the utility financial obligations, and those are these all both direct costs, such as operating capital treatment and debt service costs, as well as indirect costs, such as fiscal policy achievements. We want to make sure that we're sustainable for the long term. And so, the goal is to establish a framework for self-sufficient utility and then establish a rate, ongoing rate, to be able to recover all of those particular needs. So, that's really what the rate study is all about. And so, through that, then we can develop an annual rate implementation strategy in terms of how do we get there and how do we, if we're not meeting all of our overall needs, what does that mean in terms of a rate strategy? The indirect costs or fiscal policies that we look at in terms of, you know, bringing those particular analyses and monitoring them is that we wanted to maintain an operating reserve of 50 days of ONM. We wanted to look at capital contingency reserves, somewhere in the range of $500,000 to meet those emergency repairs that maybe we may be facing. Look at system replacement funding to be very consistent with water. And so, we are building system reinvestment funding, system replacement funding at $100,000 per year. So, we're starting 2018 with $100,000, and we're slowly increasing over time. And so, for the time period that we're looking at, we're getting to about $500,000, but starting slowly and phasing that in. And then finally, debt service coverage, we need to maintain certain requirements due to our standing bond obligations. And so, the minimum requirement is 1.25 for officially managed utility. We try to target something a little higher than that so that we can foresee or kind of ride through any type of changes that are expected and target 1.50 in terms of those policies. Some of the key requirements, if you all remember, we have developed this financial plan for a 20-year time period, and the focus is on the initial 5-year period of 2017 through 2022. Now, you are going through a wastewater facility plan that will help inform this particular analysis a bit more, but where we are today is essentially using the 2017 operating budget as a baseline for our expenses and adjusting for any known ups or downs in terms of future years. We're looking at account growth of about 1%, so that translates to about 42 equivalent residential units per year. And then, we also need to ensure that we're covering our existing debt service, which is about $683,000 currently. But the good news is that you are reducing and actually eliminating your debt over the time period that we're looking at. So, it's really ending in 2022 and is completely gone by the year 2023. So, that gives us some flexibility for financial planning. In terms of the capital cost and funding, our capital cost for that particular time period is about $1.9 million. And again, 2017 through 2022, you can kind of see the graphic here about what our expectations are for those years. It does include only annual replacement costs or collection, main replacement costs, estimates only. Again, the emphasis is here that it does not include any wastewater treatment plant costs, so that is something that will be forthcoming in the future. But with this particular capital cost, the good news is that we are not required to take out any additional debt. We are using existing cash resources and fees to fund the particular capital plan that we have for you tonight. When we look at your particular fees, you break them out into an operating fee and a debt and a service and capital fund fee. Your operating revenue, when we look at that in isolation in terms of what the fee is bringing in and what the cost that is covering, what we can see here on this particular graph is the bars here are your operating expenses in the dark blue, and then here, in your orange, is your capital funding expenses, and that's how we invest and increasing over time. What we can see is that if this particular line solid line represents your existing rate revenue before any type of rate increases, you're currently not meeting your operations. And then, we go out over time and begin to try and find some of our capital needs, get more deficient over time if we did nothing with our rates. And so, that's really what we have looked at when we looked at operating revenue requirements and our needs, is that in order to meet this gap in terms of, you know, where we are today versus where we need to go, we looked at needing to have very different rate increases over time in 2018 through 2022. You can see the percentage increases here annually, but really translates a little bit more understandably to a residential monthly bill. So, if a resident is currently paying 48, 49 today, that rate change would be $10.57 increase in 2018, followed by about $6, and then about 3, you know, $3.6 thereafter in terms of 2020 through 2022. And again, that's strictly looking at the operating fee covering the operating cost. And so, right now, it's currently inadequate to cover those operating expenses, so the rate action does appear necessary. And narrative, you know, again, with the rate increase was shown at the top there. Now, when we look at the other fee, there were some pretty interesting things happening here. We have a little to do with a debt, I mean, a debt service requirement, it was fun for that debt capital requirement. What we saw is that the current charge of $15 is bringing in the revenue that you see here in this particular line. Our obligation is very similar, if they're represented in the bars here, are showing that as we go out over time, our debt obligations are falling off and our annual debt service decreasing. And so, we then have available funding to meet any type of capital or debt requirement. And so, right now, what it appears is that we do not need a change in that $15 debt service fee in order to meet our obligations. And in fact, reality is, we actually can likely transfer some of these particular revenues, some of the particular revenues into capital funding or possibly offsetting some of our operating costs. And so, what we talked to council about on the 27th of June was an alternative scenario, which really knew just that in the fact that we were looking at that debt service fee really not being in quite alignment anymore with what your overall obligations are from that particular fund. And so, was there any way to really go back and see about using some of those particular revenue sources to offset some of our operating costs? And so, we have provided an alternative scenario than what you saw on the 27th, but essentially, it's intended to do the same thing, which is going to maintain the overall total base charge, so we're going to keep the operating and debt fee, but what we're attempting to do is shift a portion of the debt rate to operating to cover the annual needs. So, in order to minimize our overall rate impact that we have seen in 27, and we maintain that as we show, you know, what can we do in terms of kind of realigning those particular charges? And so, if in the next few slides, it was essentially to make just that, that we want to be able to first use it for operating and then use some for our capital obligations. And again, it does help build a capital reserve a bit, which is hopeful because we do understand that based on a wastewater facilities plan, it is likely that we may be seeing additional capital needs in the future. And so, on Slide 10, it's very similar, capital cost and funding. So, these, this particular cost in the graphic really doesn't change. Essentially, what is changing is that because we are covering some of those operating costs and shifting the debt service fee to operating fee, we really still have sufficient funding, no need for any debt. That holds, but there's just a little bit less money in the future capital resources for future needs. But again, still sufficient and there's the reserve building. And so, what that looks like is if we, again, tried to maintain what we have presented on the 27th, is that the base line increase that we saw a couple of slides before was the top line here, the proposed increases are, because we're able to use some of that additional operating revenue from debt to offset our operating costs, it looks like we can lower those overall rate increases, as we had mentioned, to about 10% in 18, 5% and about 3% thereafter, just more really inflationary type increases after that particular time. And so, that, you know, that really does help us out in terms of overall impact. So, it's been $10, it would be about, you know, 45, looks like 257 between 18 and 19, and then it starts going to about $1, $16, $18 in the years thereafter in terms of rate increases. So, much more moderated rate increase with the ability to shift some of that debt service revenue to the operating fund. And so, how did we go about doing that? And so, those are just, again, trying to show you the different revenue lines in terms of, you know, here's kind of where we were without the essential debt service, because we're, we have that additional revenue, that we're going to try to realign a little bit more in terms of the fees. Now, we're able to meet our overall needs with a lower rate adjustment. And so, how can we do that in terms of the debt service fund? And so, here, where our solid line really was looking at, you know, this is what our overall revenue are, and then there's the bar, there are needs, we're slowly starting to step down that overall fee. You can see, it's probably a little bit better in the table. If you look down, kind of the third line here, second and third line here, here is what our existing charge is at $16. If we are able to transfer a certain amount of that fee to the ONM fee, again, realigning those particular overall obligations a little bit better, so that the debt fee would then become from $16 and slowly ramp down to 14, 53, to about 12, 10, 64, 9, 26, after the time period, at least here, in terms of 2022, we stopped at about $8, with the anticipation that there may be future needs anticipated in the debt fund. And so, basically, by stepping down the overall debt fee, what we're doing is shifting that to the ONM fee. And so, overall, the rate increase are going, the rates are going to stay the same in terms of the customer impact, we're just shifting where those particular rates are coming from, operating or debt. And so, that's really kind of what this particular graphic is showing. And these are the increases and changes where we would transfer to the operating fund in order to meet our needs. And again, it shows a little bit better probably here on the Slide 13, which is showing you kind of the previous alternative and then the recommended rate. And so, what you can see in the previous alternative, we have, again, have our overall annual obligations, overall rates, you have the operating rate, which was 48, 49 and increasing, and the debt service fee, which was staying the same. So, for 2018, we had a 69, 34 monthly rate, monthly total rate bill for a residential customer. If you look at the bottom rate, the 69, 34 is the same. What's different is just how we're spreading those particular split in terms of the fees. So, the operating rates are 54, 81, and now the debt capital fee is slightly lower, it's no longer 16, it's slightly lower. But again, the overall impact that the customer would see is the same, so no differential. So, it's really kind of more of an internal administrative implementation effort that we're talking about to better align the particular revenue sources that are generated with the overall needs and costs on the system. And so, again, just to reiterate a little bit about, you know, what is the customer going to see? The customer does not see on their bill the overall, the two fees, really what they're seeing is the combined fees. In this particular case, it's the combined operating capital fund. So, again, those two alternatives that were developed are very similar, it's strictly just internally, we're proportioning it out differently and trying to align the needs a little bit better in terms of the fee charged. And so, in terms of that, so again, from the June 27th through today, we essentially, the overall rate impact to the customer that was proposed did not change. Really, the change that you see was that instead of keeping the debt service fee at 16, we're now stepping that debt service fee down so that over time, for the 2022 time period, it will reach about $8, and shifting the amount that's different to the ONM fee, so there's really no overall difference to the customer in terms of what they see in their bill impact. That was, the impact would be the same. So, the next step of the rate and fees would, are supposed to take effect later than January 1st, 2018, so that's what we built the financial plan around. And then, as we talked about before, we still need to come back with you on the connection charging outlets to update those particular fees. And so, with that, I'd love to take questions if you have any.
Mr. Peterson?
Um, a couple of questions, and I guess this is really, anybody can respond to this, I guess, on the line or with the city. The $2 million bond issue that we're looking at that's coming up, that we'll be discussing later, that would, the repayment of that would show up where? Is it, is that $2 million funding what?
That is for the water utility.
Not this?
Not.
That's the other side of the coin?
Correct.
Okay, so that would not affect this capital projection?
Not at all.
Okay, the other question is, early on, it talks about the capital cost for the wastewater is, are not in these, these numbers, is that correct?
There's a limited amount of capital that is in here. The capital that is known at this point in time is included in this plan. The capital that will come to light with our wastewater facility plan amendment or update is not in here because we don't know what that's going to uncover yet.
So, how does that affect these numbers? Are we building in, I understand, the discussion that we just had, and that there are some reserves perhaps that are being built in? So, what, how are we anticipating those? We don't know what those numbers are yet, but what are, what's the thinking or what's the plan for covering those costs? Would that be an increase to these rates down the road perhaps? Or that'd be probably a capital item? So, we're going back maybe to the capital line on this Page 13 to increase that, or what would you have thoughts on that?
Yeah, Angie, do you want to go back to the slide where it shows the rates, the debt rate going to $8 and then staying there? Okay.
That's done?
Yeah, that one works. So, if you look in the 2022 column, the $8 debt fee, there, that is when our debt is going to roll off, but we're leaving that $8 to provide for new debt to come on, so that we're, we're keeping some rate there budgeted in now because we do foresee that we will have to probably take on more debt at about that time.
For the wastewater plant or whatever?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah. Angie, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, and you know, I think the question of the timing, I think the reason why we're looking at rates before we kind of complete the wastewater facilities plan is that you currently have a need currently because we're not covering our operating costs, so not even considering capital.
Good point.
We're just not meeting the overall operating obligations for the facility with the fees that are currently being charged. And so, the first thing is, we want to kind of try to correct that problem as possible or begin to correct that problem, and then start slowly phasing in some of that system reinvestment that we talked about so that our rates are able to support some level of capital. But you are absolutely right, once that capital, our facility plan is completed, we would want to come back and incorporate those particular capital items in here to see how that might change the forecast that you see in future years.
Okay, now, thank you so much. And I understand, we don't, once again, we don't know what those numbers are, but it's good to hear that at least we're trying to anticipate, yeah, for that.
And we are building capital reserves.
Right, I see, yeah. Good point.
Correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Phildor?
I have two questions. One is, at the $8, approximately, how much debt would that pay for?
So, that is a question I don't know the answer to offhand. Do you, Angie?
Yeah, I'm trying to see if I have anything offhand on that.
Well, probably, I'm sorry, I don't want to, I would interject, I guess, it could be a 20-year issue.
Right.
A bond, so that would be one twentieth of some amount going forward.
Right, so I'm just wondering, you know, does $8 give us 10 million, 20 million? I don't have any feel for it, so. And obviously, that depends on what kind of a deal we get, what interest rates are at that point and everything, but if, if we could get just some sort of an estimate, so we have a general idea, I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
And then, my second question is, the debt service versus operating rates, does that tie our hands as to what we spend that money for? Or is it, that's just for our use and we can use it for whatever we need?
Yeah, it doesn't sound like those particular funds are restricted by any means.
Okay.
So, they're not, you know, we're kind of internally restricting them by, you know, by policy or practice, but there is no, you know, legal restriction on them in terms of you have to use them for this particular cost.
Right, we just have to use them for the wastewater system.
Right.
Okay, good. So, that won't interfere? The way we, the way we split it up now won't interfere with our options for financing bonds later?
No, it should. They should, they would be looking They would be looking at all of the fees that you charge along with your fund balances.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? We'll see you then. Thank you very much, Ms. Kilmore.
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to follow up a little bit and see if these are something that you guys feel comfortable with me bringing forward to the public hearing at the next meeting and for possible adoption?
Definitely.
Okay, let's see, heads nodding.
Mr. Dickerson. I do have one question. How soon will we know what impact the upgrade to the facility will have on our sewer bills?
The facility plan amendment is supposed to be completed. The facility plan amendment is supposed to be completed in March of next year. We were starting to, in September, delve into and try to shrink the number of alternatives so we can focus in on what those costs might be. I would say we won't be until September or January.
Yeah, and I got in on some of those committee meetings. Do you, do you have any, any kind of feel for how expensive an upgrade it's going to be?
No, to be honest, no.
I heard numbers like 2 million, you know, or something like that.
I haven't heard any of those. And it's, we're too early. We're still defining the alternatives and what they can be.
Okay, I'd like to thank you Angie for your presentation tonight.
Thank you. Yes, Angie, we will come back with you to answer that particular question in terms of $8 fee, what level of bond issues that you support.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Good night.
Mr. Ricard, Plan Unit Development Procedural Code.
I'm jealous. Yeah.
We should have you making more presentations.
So four years ago, we adopted the hearing examiner back in 2013. We neglected to update this own code that forces in reference how to process PUDs. Under the hearing examiner system, you have the authority to the hearing examiner for PUD, preliminary approvals. So this is primarily a procedural change. We did make some minor adjustments in there and let's see that there's a, we went from a 15% penalty bonus to a 25%. Most of the changes beyond the hearing examiner, for clarity, simplification, we eliminated some reference to the phasing. Obviously, there are a lot of phases, it doesn't necessarily have that language in there. Combined preliminary final PUDs, that terminology always just screwed up. Anybody that is looking at codes from the outside, it does your business here all the time. And then there was this whole conceptual PUD. You had to get approval for the conceptual PUD before you could go to the preliminary PUD process. And then we expanded some preliminary PUD approval information in there, expanded upon the type of studies that we require that are similar to what our plating process. And then also expanded the list of criteria in showing what's necessary, showing how your PUD proposal is superior to standard subdivision or development code. So that's the gist of it. So it's two parts tonight, a little public hearing and then payback some later.
No questions from Mr. Ricard? In that case, we open a public hearing for planning development, procedural code update as a result of document of the hearing examiner system of 2013. Anybody wishing to testify for or against the proposed procedural code ordinance number 17026 and then chapter 1733, please step forward, state your name and address. Once again, anybody wishing to testify for or against the planning procedure code, please step forward, state your name and address. And at the final time, anybody wishing to testify for or against the planning unit development procedural code, please step forward, state your name and address. Seeing no one, I would vote on motion to end the public hearing. It's been moved by Ms. Nye, seconded by Ms. Sherman. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposing side, motion passes unanimously. Ms. Nysel, administrative fees.
Hi, so as I talked to you about last week, to do the public records changes to update for the new laws, we have to do a public hearing on our administrative fees. These administrative fees bring us into compliance with the new laws. And there was also one additional request from the police department to make a change to the bicycle licensing fees. The annual fee that they currently have is a $1 annual fee that is rarely, if ever used, and just more difficult to track. So they would like to just eliminate that fee and only have the $5 lifetime fee. So that's kind of a procedural request to just, since we're making a change to the administrative fees, they'd like to do it all at once. So throughout our previous administrative fees resolution, there are public records copy charges spread throughout the different departments. And some of them actually don't really comply with the public records laws. So by making these changes, we're making it a little easier for both the public and staff to understand for any records request or copies or any documents that we're providing to the public, there's one section that they can go to for the fees and this, these fees relate to anything that they're producing. So this is kind of an overview of what the old, the different sections of where the old fees are at as compared to the new ones. And the new ones also include all of the additional things, the electronic documents that we can charge for, the time for transmitting the electronic documents or making the photocopies, that sort of thing. And then this talks about the fee options for the bicycle license. Chief Tamaras requested that we eliminate that $1 annual license just to make everything easier and make the license fee easier to promote and for the tracking purposes. So are there any questions?
Mr. Dickerson. Yeah, on the bicycles fees, I'm trying to understand, so there's a lot of bicycles and very few people buy license, right? So I'm trying to understand, where is the license good for on the bicycle? Just colors place? And what if people bring them in from outside? What if you take your bicycle to another municipality? How does this all work?
I will let Chief Tamaras respond to that one.
So it's a great question, and the simple fact is, is that the license fee helps us track stolen bicycles and return them back to the owners. That's simply what it is. We have a spreadsheet, we sell them the license, we have a forever, but there's just, we have like 50 bicycles right now in pocket. We've got some, it's a problem, you see, constantly, of these bikes, and people don't find them. It's just amazing to me that people don't come down and say, hey, I lost my bike, is it here? So we're hoping this way we can help do that. And then we'll put it, we'll start, we're going to, we're going to have bicycle riders ready to be, you know, installed.
So the answer is the license is good anywhere for tracking purposes?
Well, if you move to Seattle, probably not going to find your bicycle, bicycle license unless the PD recognizes the license and calls us. And that will happen in the system.
Oh, it's not recognizable?
It's not recognizable in the, it's only recognizable in our system.
Okay, interesting.
Seeing none, would you like to open a public hearing for administrative fees for public records? Anybody wishing to testify for or against the administrative fees for public records? Resolution 17 dash 024, please step forward, state your name and address. Anybody wishing to testify for or against the administrative fees for public records? Please step forward, state your name and address. And one final time, anybody wishing to testify for or against administrative fees for public records? Please step forward, state your name and address. Seeing no one, I would welcome a motion to close the public hearing. It's been moved by Mr. Cleveland, seconded by Ms. Selby. Any further discussion?
Yeah. Look this way next time he asks for a motion.
I will do that.
Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, same side, motion passes unanimously. Action items, Mr. Ricard, Plan Unit Development Procedural Code.
I ask that you approve this report. Are there any questions further? I can't really elaborate more on that side of it.
Questions for Mr. Ricard?
Nothing new has come up.
Seeing none, is there a motion? Mr. Dickerson.
Sorry to surprise you, but I'd like to make a motion.
One second.
I didn't get the finish, but I'm good. So something more, can you continue?
Just to clarify, the motion was for the agenda bill 17150, the Plan Unit Development for approval.
It's been moved, is there a second? It's been seconded, both moved by Mr. Dickerson, seconded by Mr. Cleveland. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, same side, motion passes unanimously. Administrative fees, Ms. Nysel.
And I would request the same for the administrative fees resolution.
Ms. Sherman.
I will make a motion to approve administrative fees, resolution number 17 dash 3024, incorporating changes to the general administrative fees of the City of College Police.
It's been, is it seconded by Ms. Selby? Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, same side, motion passes unanimously. Your jet item 5003, public records policy, Ms. Nysel.
Okay, so this one is going a little bit more in depth instead of the fees, about the actual effects of House Bill 1594 and 1595 that were recently passed through the legislature. They became effective on the 23rd. So there's, the next slide, it shows you kind of our history of the public records that our office deals with. As you can see, it's not a huge amount and the majority of them are police department records. An average of about 10 a month. This was a question last time, and so I figured I'd give you some data and show you that. So the highlights of House Bill 1594, it's, one of the bills kind of talks about the records and the procedures, and the other one talks about the dollars. So 1594 defines public record a little bit clearer than the previous, previous law. It adds some specific training requirements. So there's always been some training requirements, but this adds specific training requirements requiring technology training for the public records officer, which was not required before. It adds some clarification abilities for the overbroad requests, saying all records. It gives a little bit more clarification to the legal ability for us to say, you need to, need to narrow this down, give us some keywords, something like that. So it's just, allows us to be able to pinpoint the records easier. There's also, through this law, established a consultation program that will be offered to the various entities to help with figuring out how to handle your public records. It adds a competitive grant program to help fund those technology programs because they are very expensive and a lot of smaller agencies that will have to have that kind of technology just at this time without additional funding can't, can't afford it. And there's some changes to the way that we track our public records that come in. There's some log requirements as to what we keep track of. So basically, this goes a little bit more in depth as far as the definition of the public records. There's, we don't really have a problem with that, but some entities that have like parks volunteers or say the Boy Scout troop comes in and does something for us, it clarifies that records held by them are not necessarily considered the entity's public records. So it just prevents, prevents having to track those volunteer agency records as well when they don't have any agency authority really. So as far as the training, the, the technology information services, the requirement is for the public records officer to have some training in that because obviously, if we're going to be utilizing the technology, we need to know how to utilize it. I for one would really like some training in that. And the consultation program, I kind of went over the clarification already, the consultation program, the attorney general and the state archives are both to set up consultation programs and get a whack written for us for the administrative rules, which I don't believe is completed yet, but we'll be, we'll be looking for that. And then hopefully, we'll also be looking for that competitive grant program for some, some technology funding. The tracking log, we already do most of this in our internal process. The, the identity of the requester typically that is provided. The only thing I think that we're really changing on here is including the actual text of the request, which before we've summarized it, now they want us to actually put the text of the request in there. 1595, the big changes they did there is allowing 1595, the big changes they did there is allowing charges for copies of electronic documents, which have always been free in the past. It helps recoup some of those costs of the, the time and everything spent doing all of that. It establishes a process to set the fees for public records, which we just went through. It allows for a billing of customized service charge for expertise IT services. So if a request comes in that requires us to hire an outside IT company to, because it's so broad, and so we can actually transfer that cost on to the requester, provided we give them notice and allow them to change or reduce the clarification, clarify their request. It clarifies what's an identifiable record and allows denial of bot requests. And bot requests are requests that, like a computer programmer designs a program to just hammer a company with a request for public records, like every five minutes or something like that. And large agencies do get these on a regular basis, and as long as you can see that it falls into the categories that they, they clarify as a bot request, then you can consider that invalid.
What is B O T name?
Robot, acronym for robot.
Thank you, Harding.
A million useless facts.
So this just kind of, slide just kind of goes into a little bit of what I talked about on the different fees that we can charge for the identifiable records. When somebody says they want all of your records, that's not considered a valid request. They have to give you some sort of search term. So. And again, talks about that we don't, we can't require a format, but we do now, we are allowed to require them to request it within city hours. Before, it was kind of open to where if somebody saw a city worker at the store on a weekend, they could say, hey, I need such and such, and it was technically considered a valid records request. So that is no longer, they clarified that for us, which we appreciate.
But that, you had email on that line, too, but they can send an email after hours, and that?
They can send an email after hours, but we don't consider it received until...
Right, on the next business day.
Right, yeah. Any questions?
Mr. Dickerson?
Well, let's talk about who these public records are available to. Of course, they're available to the public. How about city employees and...
They are available to anybody that requests them.
Are they the same price for anybody, both public and city employees?
Yes. Does, a public record request is, is handled the same for everybody?
Other questions?
I'll motion to approve Lord Insol for 17-027, adding Chapter 2.10, Public Records to the College Place Municipal Code.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Cleveland, seconded by Ms. Sherman. All, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Personnel, any further? Ms. Dory.
All right. I'm back tonight in hopes that you will consider approving the Phase 1 of the College Place Questionnaire Manual. It helps us to have clearly written policies, also some day-to-day making decisions. The Personnel Committee approves it on June 26th. We brought it before you last time, and bringing it back tonight. The first thing that would need to happen would be that you'd have to repeal ordinance 641. Those, it was passed in 1990, and those policies are outdated. And then ordinance 17-028, or that's the repeal 641, and allow for future flexibility for us to adopt the policy manual by resolution instead of ordinance. And then the expedited paths, Resolution 17-025, authorizes the City Mayor and the Mayor to execute Phase 1 of the City College Place Personnel Manual. Any questions?
Mr. Dickerson?
Oh, go ahead, do you have a question?
The Personnel Manual is, I'm assuming it's updated and it's handed out to every employee, what, each year? A new one? Would that be the typical?
That would be the goal. To my knowledge, it hasn't been updated since May 2019.
And so it's not necessarily, so the goal down the road is to hand this out to each employee?
Yes, that is the goal.
Every year?
Definitely to a new employee at this time, and then to update it and to keep an updated copy on our website. So that, a link to it, so that it can be reviewed at any time.
Okay. A quick follow-up. For employee grievances, is there, I went through this, and I apologize, the motion, is there a, do they sign an agreement for arbitration versus the ability to have legal action? Many businesses, you sign it, they will go to an arbitrator instead of to, and, well, filing suit. Everybody has the ability to file suit, but typically there is a signature page when you receive the employment, you know, that talks about that you'll handle this through arbitration. I guess that's the way I should put it. Is there been any...
Well, some of that is going to be governed by union.
Right, by bargaining agreements. Right. Which is stated in the acknowledgement, and then, in the acknowledgement, for people who aren't covered by bargaining agreement, it states that they're an at-will employee. Do you want that exactly answered your question or not?
So there isn't...
There is a signature page.
Yes.
I wouldn't have to... You know, if you don't have, I mean, it's more of a thought perhaps, but many employers have that, that they agree to go to arbitration instead of...
Kind of just adds point two. Basically, an employee, if they have a problem with the city, or they're gonna take the court, and then it'll go to some kind of arbitration during that process.
Well, employers that I've, yeah, I've been with, it states it goes to arbitration first, but anyway.
There's nothing in here that specifically talks about that.
Okay.
As far as bargaining agreements, it's laid out exactly how it has to happen, but for other places, no.
Okay.
It's not. We haven't discussed that in here.
Okay. I, all I would say is that sometimes that is in the, obviously is in the, the advantage for the employee.
And just as a reminder, this is only the first three phases.
Yeah, that's a good reminder. I know we're still working through this, and I was just, yeah, I just wanted to bring that up.
I think that's gonna end up coming in...
Phase two or three?
Yeah, phase three, actually, the performance management and risk management.
I may have, okay, all right. Well, it's been brought up, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions, please?
Looking at the Agenda Bill, I see that the regulations for two separate motions.
We have to, we have to repeal because we're moving from a ordinance to adoption by resolution. We need to do that separately.
How would I make a motion? We approve ordinance 17-028, we go ordinance number 641.
Second.
It's been moved, but seconded, any further discussion?
Hopefully, a quick question. How does the enforcement of the Personnel Manual here change when it's, has a resolution as opposed to an ordinance?
Well, the enforcement changes, doesn't it? It's just easier for us to update when that's necessary. Do you have anything about that?
I would just add, and looking at how most cities do the Personnel Manuels is by resolution, a big factor to that is as we're, as city councils take out resolutions and pass them and adopt them, you can do that as added into Resolution Section of the Municipal Code. If you go into Ordinance Section, and you're always updating that, even with a little date change or something, that's $20 per page, as opposed to just uploading it on the resolution site. So it's basically more cost-effective to go resolution rather than...
Well, I'd just like to add that the, the legal recommendation, you know, from MRC and AWC is, ordinance is, it should be an ordinance or policy, it's a policy. Any policy, if it's gonna be permanent, it should be an ordinance. And if it's temporary, it should be a resolution. And so we get mixed up in between sometimes for updating ordinancees more than we are resolutions, and you wonder why, you know. But, you know, we just try to get it so it's easiest to deal with.
Mr. Peterson? Make a motion to approve.
We already have one.
Number two?
We haven't voted on the first one yet.
Uh, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Seeing none, motion passes unanimously.
Yeah, I guess, here we go. A big motion to approve Resolution 17-025, Phase 1 of the City College Place Personnel Manual.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Peterson, seconded by Mr. Cleveland. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Well, Ms. Dory, you are on base.
I'll take, yeah, I'll take this one. David Winder is supposed to be here today, but he's on vacation because he's been in a lot of fires outside the city. So with this, Fire Department Policy Manual, it's just trying to establish baseline policies, also mirrors surrounding Fire District Number 4. They shared their policy manual with us, and just when you're operating a volunteer fire department, it's very important to set forth the policies, procedures, miles of behavior that you expect, and especially since we're getting new volunteers and folks living at the fire station, this was a good time to get this going. And this went through Personnel Committee, and it is before you today.
Questions for you, please?
I'll make one up.
Okay.
So I think I know the answer, and you kind of stated some of this, but why, if this is a department within the city, why do they get their own? And with the exception that you just said, like, they're living there, whatever, why wouldn't that be under the same?
It's because there's also volunteers over there, and then in addition, there's some also procedural, operational things having to do with fire departments that are within those.
But it wouldn't still just be under one big city Personnel Manual, wouldn't it?
Well, in the language in this manual, the parts where there is overlap, it mirrors each other, but by and large, quite a bit of this has very fire department-specific things.
Other questions?
I would move to approve Resolution Number 17-026 for the adoption of the Fire Department Policy Manual and Fire Department Personnel.
Second.
You gotta be faster than me here. Keep things balanced.
It's been moved by Ms. Selby, seconded by Mr. Dickerson. Any further discussion?
See, I knew it was coming.
Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Rosicelli, please.
Okay. Well, this was a very, this was a great process to be a part of. Lots of public input. This is really setting forth the vision of the residents, council, the public, everyone. As far as what the City of College Place is, is going to be in the next 10 years. There were surveys conducted online, public workshops, three of them to be exact, stakeholder interviews, couple workshops with city council, went through a final iterative phase with the Mayor and I working with Lawson Knight to set some timelines for things. Overall, very comprehensive, thorough document. It went out for a public comment period for the last month. Lots of impressions, so people seeing it online, we know that through Google Analytics and impression tools in our social media. The only comment I got back on Facebook is resident that said fantastic, so.
Questions for Mr. Rosicelli, or with this, by Mr. Lawson Knight, who is our consultant for this process? Questions for Mr. Knight, Mr. Rosicelli himself? Mr. Dickerson?
I just wanted to thank everybody for going through this process, and Mr. Knight, thank you. It was a very interesting process for us, and I think it's one that we needed, you know, to keep our vision kind of in focus.
Any other questions or discussion? Ms. Sherman?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance Number 17-029, which authorizes the adoption and implementation of the College Place Strategic Plan, 2017 to 2020.
It's been moved by Sherman. By Sherman? Seconded by Ms. Knight. Any further discussion, Ms. Selby?
I just had a question. As well, in the Agenda Bill, it said something about this being available with public comments with every day? So is it, wasn't it quite clear looking at the ordinance in the Agenda Bill, are we adopting a strategic plan, or are we adopting it subject to comment?
We are adopting the strategic plan. That's the purpose of the...
But what, oh, I think that maybe you didn't... It's possible you didn't update the Agenda Bill, because it says the draft strategic plan will be available on front counter and online for the next month for public comment.
Yeah, that confused me. That was the line that confused me, because I'm like, I thought it was done.
That already happened.
Okay, yeah, that all...
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
It's been moved, been seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Rosicelli, you're still on the hook for local improvement districts.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is just updating our code section, Chapter 3.2, on local improvement districts. The current code was a little bit disjointed, didn't mention all of the RCW sections. The purpose of this is that the chapter's numbers in 3.20 and 0.10, they'll be hyperlinked in the digital copy of the booklet to go with the respective RCW. And it also states what the duties of the key staff members involved in the local improvement districts are. And then just the fact that rate of interest, subject to whatever ordinance is passed, that that can be a factor within that as, and then it also sets forth some policy of delinquent settlements and, for closure, delinquent assessments, which mirrors Chapter 35.50 RCW. This was borrowed from some code update work that was completed over in the City of Athala.
Questions for Mr. Rosicelli? Mr. Dickerson?
No question, but thank you for kind of going through this housecleaning ordinance, you know, and resolutions. It's something that's been needed for a long time, and we've been aware of some of this stuff, but to have somebody here that's looking into every closet and seeing where we need to upgrade, and where we need to make our system more available and understandable, it's a real joy to watch.
Thank you.
All motion to approve ordinance number 17-30, repealing and replacing chapter 3.20, local improvement assessment with chapter 3.20, creation, administration, financing of local improvement districts to the College Place Municipal Code.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Cleveland, the seconded by Ms. Selby. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify as a aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Ms. Gilmore, acceptance of proposal for bond issuance services.
Yeah, so this is an agenda bill bringing in front of you the results of our RFQ for bond issuance services. I previously brought these to the workshop to just introduce them to you, but I'll go over them again. We had responses from DA Davidson, Washington Federal, Banner Bank, and Community Bank, and I'm not going to go over all the details on the other three, but Community Bank's offer to us was for $2 million bond issuance, they offered 2.8% fixed for 20 years with an origination fee of $1,000 and document fee of $250, no prepayment penalty, and they offered a 12-month drawdown period. And I think that was an excellent offer, and I am coming for you to ask that you authorize acceptance of their proposal. And we have Tom Riden in the council chambers of us tonight, the president of Community Bank, so.
Second.
Um, this does look like a good proposal. I have a related question. Does the fact that the legislature did not pass the capital budget mean that our, how is that going to affect our water project?
You want to take that one?
I will answer that because the, the recent news as of late changed quite dramatically. When I talked to certain folks in the legislature last week, it sounded like there would still be hope for something in the next month or two. However, from what I am reading, it looks like that may not occur. I will say that with the water well issue, it's, it's significant enough that I believe we need to do something with it. So we need to regroup and talk about that because that article in some news that I've also received from key sources is pretty new to digest, but we're going to regroup and we need to do something, so.
And I will.
What else are you going to need, this money?
Right, yeah. I will note that the majority of the funding for the, the well project was the DOH. So the money, this money that we are taking out with this issuance was actually earmarked for some other projects.
Okay.
So we really just need to figure out the gap for the DOH issue, if, if that is an issue.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
That, that doesn't affect the drinking water, $3 million you need here.
Uh, to be continued then, yeah, I'm gonna say that.
Yeah.
Well, given that, I would have moved that we authorize acceptance of the bond proposal from Community Bank.
It's been moved, is that Ms. Sherman? Moved by Ms. Selby, seconded by Ms. Sherman. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify as a aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Ms. Gilmore, acceptance of proposal for bond issuance services.
Yeah, so this is an agenda bill bringing in front of you the results of our RFQ for bond issuance services. I previously brought these to the workshop to just introduce them to you, but I'll go over them again. We had responses from DA Davidson, Washington Federal, Banner Bank, and Community Bank, and I'm not going to go over all the details on the other three, but Community Bank's offer to us was for $2 million bond issuance, they offered 2.8% fixed for 20 years with an origination fee of $1,000 and document fee of $250, no prepayment penalty, and they offered a 12-month drawdown period. And I think that was an excellent offer, and I am coming for you to ask that you authorize acceptance of their proposal. And we have Tom Riden in the council chambers of us tonight, the president of Community Bank, so.
Second.
Um, this does look like a good proposal. I have a related question. Does the fact that the legislature did not pass the capital budget mean that our, how is that going to affect our water project?
You want to take that one?
I will answer that because the, the recent news as of late changed quite dramatically. When I talked to certain folks in the legislature last week, it sounded like there would still be hope for something in the next month or two. However, from what I am reading, it looks like that may not occur. I will say that with the water well issue, it's, it's significant enough that I believe we need to do something with it. So we need to regroup and talk about that because that article in some news that I've also received from key sources is pretty new to digest, but we're going to regroup and we need to do something, so.
And I will.
What else are you going to need, this money?
Right, yeah. I will note that the majority of the funding for the, the well project was the DOH. So the money, this money that we are taking out with this issuance was actually earmarked for some other projects.
Okay.
So we really just need to figure out the gap for the DOH issue, if, if that is an issue.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
That, that doesn't affect the drinking water, $3 million you need here.
Uh, to be continued then, yeah, I'm gonna say that.
Yeah.
Well, given that, I would have moved that we authorize acceptance of the bond proposal from Community Bank.
It's been moved, is that Ms. Sherman? Moved by Ms. Selby, seconded by Ms. Sherman. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify as a aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Hartley?
Agreement with JUB for design of influent flow meter. Back when the plant was constructed in 2000, the requirement was for the influent flow meter to be downstream of any incoming flows. That was not only our influence, but any recirculation among the plant. So like when we press and all that water goes in, it recirculates ahead of the flow meter and gets counted again. But the problem with that right now is, as you recirculate that water and recount it, we've got to, we've got to limit where we can't be above 85% for more than three months in a row. And if we are, then we have to develop a plan, how we're going to deal with all this stuff. The requirements have changed now, and so what we'd like to do is move the influent meter ahead of the recovery flows and just, just measure the actual influent going into the plant, not every reuse that we do. And so I'd like to recommend that we hire JUB to design that relocation of the influent meter at the tree of the plant for possibly the press management.
Questions for Ms. Selby?
I'd make a motion to approve agreement for the design of the influent in your relocation for $18,000.
It's been moved by Mr. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Myhena. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify as a aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And Mr. Hartley, you are on base again.
Okay, thank you. Coming before you to ask for purchase, authorization to purchase a striper for any.
All in favor?
Yeah, that's what it is.
I know. You want any strippers?
Yeah, I'll put you there. And so, right now, what we have is an old 1972 striper that was used by the county. You've probably seen my foreman and other employee driving in that little open air machine. Problem is, we can't use, we can't apply glass beads for reflectivity on our, on our painting, and it is so old, it's, it's a danger. There's no bottom in it when you drive it with the, and, and we have, a lot of times the paint will stick on, and so we wanted to stop and then have messes and so forth. It's time for replacing it. And so I would request that you approve the purchase of the paint striper for an amount of $84,376.96, with the understanding that we are going to pay the tax on, on our.
Mr. Peterson?
Well, I'll approve agenda bill 17-174 for the purchase of a striper for $77,623.70.
It's been moved by Mr. Peterson.
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? Ms. Selby?
Um, actually, I have a couple of questions. Does that include authorizing the transfer and everything that's in the agenda bill?
The main thing I need to clarify, we're not going to be financed, this won't be paid legally, but if we could correct that, let me, council member, clarify that to be, to include the tax.
Well, my motion was to approve the agenda bill and the recommendation.
And my second question is, I, I kind of don't understand why we pay the tax directly. I mean, I'm all, I'm not opposed to paying taxes, but that just seems a little odd.
This is purchasing through a cooperative, and they, and so they just get the price from the company that we buy, turn it around, pay tax. So one way or another, we pay it, and so they do the tax.
Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify as a aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Put your vehicle horn to be turned.
Not, probably not in time. Well, the nice thing, it'll be, it'll be water-based paint from now on, we'll be able to give it, so we can use it quicker when we need it.
A little less. A little wear?
Huh?
What's the wear on water?
Well, wear probably is a little less, but, but we can apply it. It's easy, and it's not hazardous, and so.
What are you going to name?
Oh, yeah.
What are you going to name the new striper?
Striper district. We should have a contest.
There you go.
I'm naming contests on Facebook, Mike.
Mike, make it happen.
Yeah, well, I won't say it, but I've seen the guy Gypsy Rose.
Okay. No contests on Facebook, she's been named.
Gypsy Rose is the name?
Well, did you see her? She kind of looks like a gypsy.
Okay. Are you going to motion that?
We got Gypsy Rose.
I don't know. Do we need formal, we get to spray it?
Do we have Gypsy Rose in?
No, but I like it.
Mr. Mizatello? What do you find? Save that for me.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mayor. So the, so this is just an introduction to this. Any assistance from City Council on your thoughts of this would be greatly appreciated. So a couple of years ago, there was a regional wayfinding plan that was done by a cooperative in visit Walwala and a couple of other groups, where it looked holistically doing wayfinding signage across the valley. As part of the Cars Project, we do have money budget to do the said wayfinding signage, about $60,000. A couple of things that we've done as of late is, as you all know, we've, we're partnering with the Rural Community Design Initiative at Washington State University. We had the workshops the last couple of months on both where to put wayfinding signage as well as design regulations, because in the regional plan, it didn't really drill down specifically into what, what would be placed where in the city. It was very general. The other, so please look at the wayfinding signage map and email me of any thoughts or suggestions. Went through workshops and Economic Development Commission. We have meeting on nomenclature and what they thought would be good as far as titling business districts and such. The bigger issue at hand, though, is the type of wayfinding signage. So it, so if one looks at the plan and what was proposed, I got a quote for that, and that type of wayfinding signage per sign runs about $4,500. That, from talking to City of Walwala and City of Milton-Freewater, that's why you haven't really seen those signs been popping up in the immediate area. And these, those are the ones that look like this right here.
That's the, that's the Joe Fisher.
On the big screen.
Joe Fisher, yep. So that's these ones. I wanted to present another option, and this was utilized at my past employer in Colfax, because at Colfax, we wanted to do wayfinding signage as well, but we don't really have anywhere near that amount to do the said signage. So this is what was done in Colfax. The color can be changed, the top part could be cut off. That is what the sign in Colfax is, and the cost per sign there was $400 as opposed to $4,500. So while we have money to do a couple of these, we still wouldn't have the whole system. These, we could get the whole system in, in place, which would be a good thing. And the other thing I learned in Colfax is that it would shock you where it seems like once the signage is up, it seems like you get drivers and folks hitting it at times. And if you have a $4,500 sign, it's a lot harder to replace than one of these. So I, I mean, there are some drawbacks. The more expensive signage, you have a texture back to them and they're color-coded and so forth. This is more simplistic, but in looking longer term, and can we afford to maintain it, and will this be a one-time thing, or is this actually something to move forward? I think this is more within the wheelhouse. Where we find it in general is very important, though, because I know it's, we talk about a lot in Economic Development Commission, the folks who aren't familiar with the immediate area have problems identifying where things are at, and it's definitely needed.
Questions for Mr. Peterson?
Mike, was there, I think this was discussed here a certain time, but refresh my memory. Was, is there, is there coordination between Walwala County or the City of College Place in having signs that look the same, or has that, has that fallen off in popularity?
So in talking with Walwala County, that still isn't really a budgeted item. With the City of Walwala and City of Milton-Freewater, they wanted to do signage, but again, the cost figure is very prohibitive for them. I've mentioned this other option. They are very interested in it, but nothing, nothing southern stone is of the.
So down the road, there could be a coordination between Walwala, College Place, Don't Throw Other, and with your suggestion to perhaps go with the less expensive sign, or, and they're considering that, if I understand what you just said.
Yeah, I, I've shared it with them, and they're considering it. Now, to be forthright, the City of Dayton, which is out on the periphery, they went with this option. That was mainly because from what I found out, the port over there did some cost sharing, and they covered a lot of it. But everyone else is considering this that I've shared, but nothing southern stone.
Right, yeah, yeah, okay. Can we determine that?
Ms. Sherman?
Oh, I think, Maureen, you might be remembering when it was first presented to us by Dwayne Walwala, it was, Walwala, it was a valley area. And so it was all three together, but they passed away, and I think it kind of, and the cost kind of went. That might be what you're remembering. But I like that we can change the color.
Ms. Selby?
Um, in transportation engineering, one of the things you look at is the prevalence of signs, and it's, you've got to strike the right balance, because too many signs actually become a hazard. Not enough signs are also a hazard. And one of the key things is signs that are too small to read are also a hazard, because you have people that are, like me, that are slamming on the brakes at every corner because they don't know which side, which street. So, um, to me, this is more consistent with what we have in our other signs, and so the less variety, the easier it is for people to read. So from a simple, um, safety and being able to read it at speed, et cetera, I actually like this, and the fact that it's, you know, so much cheaper is a huge bonus as well. And if we suddenly end up rolling. And if we suddenly end up rolling the money, we can always upgrade the signs later if we have a plan.
That's true.
If you want to see how many action, there's about four of the of women in Colfax. Right now, it's out of blue.
Cougar rolls on the way.
So three wide and four and a half high is actually a pretty big sign, you know, for if it's going to be right on the curve. Now, I understand this agenda item just for information purposes. Would you like to get it going?
Well, I would just like to hear from council, this is the direction, and then I can get the quotes, and then this will appear at the next council meeting, because really this is of key importance for our economic development. We get these signs up.
So Mike, to clarify what I brought up earlier, we will go on our own on these signs if we okay this with the style and the correctness.
If that is the direction I receive from City Council, then yep.
Or will be the trendsetter that will follow us.
No, thanks.
A question on the wayfinding, are we allowed to include specific businesses? Or do we have to do like areas? Because I think, one of the things I struggled with when I first got here was finding Walmart, et cetera. Everybody's like, well, it's over the hill. And I'm like, I'm sorry, that was a little house.
That was something that was looked into quite a bit in Colfax. And I also did wayfind in Beaver than Oregon as well. While there isn't a specific RCW prohibition against it, I will say any of the signs, because there are a couple on that map if you look at it, that we would like to place along State Route 125 and along Myra Road. I had that conversation with the Department of Transportation in City of Colfax. They were willing to withhold permits if we were naming specific businesses. But then when we mentioned, hey, could we do a south business area? Can we call it downtown? They were fine with that. So that's why in the site map that's in that, in the Agenda Bill, you'll see that the business districts are given names, because Department of Transportation seemed okay with it. And I think definitely longer term with Myra Road, since I know down the road, that's something the state is looking at as far as 125 coming up that way. I think it's important we have signage that conforms to what WASDOT could hold us to. Otherwise, it could be all over the place.
So maybe you covered this, but raise us a question. Would these be restricted to within the city limits?
The signage that we would put up would be within the city limits, yep.
What color options do we have? What color options do we have? Is there like a specific palette we have to choose from? Or is it like any RGB value we could think of?
Pretty much any RGB value. Zoomer, they're very flexible. I just asked them to look at this, somewhat match the, some of our current palette, but very flexible.
One other comment I have is simply that I like the seal at the top, and that's my College Place, but I feel like that'd just be really difficult to read unless you're standing right in front of it. I wonder if there's some other text we could use to denoteate that this is College Place and these are points of interest nearby, just because I feel like that's a little bit hard to see. Or just text?
I mean, one option is maybe more like an ornate, like CP or something like that.
Could I be blast with CP?
Now if we put welcome sign, which is in the, it's in the site map, the welcome sign.
This is really great, Mike. Thank you.
One last, I'm still hung up on, you know, how people find specific things. On the, like Highway 12 and stuff, can we do the, like, food and gas and put like they have on the highways?
So on State Route 125, because that's within our city limits, we would have the ability to put like food, gas, name a shopping district on that. Where it gets very sketchy is like, for instance, out on Highway 12, for instance. Because why is it Colfax, we wanted to put signs further out saying, hey, don't bypass us on Airport Road, go ahead. WASDOT, they definitely don't cooperate that way, and they don't mind city signs outside of the city jurisdiction. So we couldn't put any of the wayfinding signs along highway up there 26 outside of town.
But, but like when you're going along up towards Yoplait, places like that, you'll see signs that say food, gas, this exit, food, gas, whatever. And then they'll have the little signs that say, you know, Subway, McDonald's, Taco Bell. And the businesses pay for those, but it seems like it would be really good for us to have some of those on Highway 12, so. Would we like encourage our businesses to do that?
We could encourage our businesses to do that, or we could, we could also, under discussions with the Department of Transportation about wanting a specific WASDOT or game sign up there, but we'd have to fit according to their criteria, because they will not put our type of signage outside of the city limits.
And if you're going to talk about advertising private businesses on a publicly funded sign, you're going to run into some constitutional issues. So you really want to get into the specifics of that before you start doing that.
Yeah, and I'm fine with making the businesses pay for it, but I just think if we can help it happen, it could be really helpful, because people go by on Highway 12, have no idea that they're going three miles from a Walmart.
So I just want to summarize what I've heard so far. So from what I'm hearing, is City Council okay with the general look of the sign?
You know, Mike, some of the discussion is just, I know, I think that's fine. I think that's where probably the majority is, although I would want to venture to guess. But it would be nice though to know, I think there is, do you agree, there is some value of coordination of signs?
Yeah.
If only between Walwala and College Place perhaps. And so, and I don't want to belabor this, but you really have no timing for input from Walwala on what they've decided probably before we would vote. We don't know, do we?
No, because from my discussions with them, this isn't really much of a priority at the moment.
I see, okay, okay, so to know.
Yeah, so for now, it would be our thing, but we can also carry themes even by nomenclature. I think the fact that we're setting the stage, that we're naming business districts, parks, things like that, that can be carried.
Sure, sure. Yeah, thanks, Mike.
Mr. Peterson? You're looking for recommendations from the council. Just one other issue. I saw the blue, and then I saw the green, and you kind of decided with the green?
I just told them to throw any color on there, to be frank, because they were backed up in their sign design shop. I was afraid we wouldn't even give an example, so.
I just thought the blue ones that you presented were a little more attractive, but that's amazing.
Well, if put this way, we could get these colored in that same blue shade, and then that would likely mirror the region, so that could...
Do I remember one top or bottom being arched a little on the center?
Oh, this.
That was on the other one.
On the, on the bottom, yeah, on the bottom.
Yeah.
Did the little bow strike? Anyway, I thought this was very attractive.
I was looking through, I think it's Exhibit 4 in our packets there, called Walwala Valley Wayfinding Signage Program. And it seemed like the second alternative doesn't quite, isn't consistent with what the valley wanted to do in the two whole valley. It's like they have the medallions for the different cities, they have medallions for some of the wine districts. It looks like there's something consistent, including it looks like a sign, as you enter, gaping with the valley, that highlights those, you know, is... I just wonder if anyone else has looked through that and looked at some of the ideas that they've drawn up? Maybe we should look at something that, you know, maybe the mat medallion or something was part of it, or I don't know.
I mean, I believe there's ways we can take elements of the plan and do them in a cost-effective way. So utilizing the color scheme, the font style even, and even the medallions, if we wanted to, I could get a quote for that. I think there's options to essentially borrow some of that palette type.
So what's actually been done with that?
As far as what's been done with the Walwala Valley Wayfinding Plan, the City of Dayton, they have put up some signage that was funded, a good portion of it by the port. And as far as the other organizations, there really hasn't been much of a plan to move forward just because of the price tag and just lower priority.
Is there anyone that's kind of coordinating this with the different cities and for the valley? Between the port?
Unfortunately, a lot of folks who were involved in this are really no longer. So Duane Walmart, he's no longer with us. Ron Peck moved to Seattle. And the only one left is Jenny Dickinson with the Port of Columbia. So a lot of what was behind this has changed and manifested over the last couple of years.
Because I love that continuity through the valley, you know, I love that consistency. Maybe we need to take on a push or find someone that wants to take this bill by the horn and vote it. But it'd be nice if, you know, that could be done.
Yeah, I agree. It looks really nice, but for the cost and to maintain it for years to come, that's...
Could something be done with the more cost effects of signage and coordinating?
Yes, and I think that's what Mike, yeah, I think that's what Mike is saying, is that we're kind of going to be taking the first step. And we've had these conversations with both through Walwala that potentially they would then follow what we, the designer or whatever, that we choose. I mean, they'll do something completely different as well, but yeah. That was a risk anyways.
That was just my question, and you should pick it up if you can.
I think there's ways we can take elements of this plan, put it in the zoomer signage, and then have a cost-effective product that should one get damaged in the future, something that won't be a major catastrophe of a place.
Any other business from the council?
I have a question on this future agenda. Okay, for action items for September 26 on the back page of... What does, what do you, what do you think for number five bylaws? What are you talking about?
That's just for Historic Preservation Commission, because we're filing certified local government applications, so we could get grants.
I heard back from, oh, DAP on that. They don't need that push now. Oh, so the commission can just do that now? Oh, okay.
Seconded by, by, by everybody else. Ms. Sherman, all in favor, please signify the same eye. Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.